Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, council members, if you would, please stand for the invocation that will be given by the Honorable Bishop Dr. Curtis Edmonds, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Moody.
Bishop?
Gracious God our Father, we're so grateful that you have spared our lives thus far. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come and share in the business of our city. We ask, God, that you keep us, God, on the straight and narrow path, that what we say, Lord, be worth the things that we say. Bless us and keep us as only you're able to do, and we'll be careful to give your name praise, glory, and honor. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, clear, free, and just for all.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Members of City Council, if you would, please indicate your presence electronically.
Five members of council are present.
All right, thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of May 10, 2016, and a regular meeting of May 10, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. The minutes are adopted five zero.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Yes. City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her remarks. Public hearing. 16-160, Public Hearing on Use Permit Applications. Item A, UP 16-03, Prince Park. Dexter Adams of Flipping USA LLC requests a use permit for a duplex at 1413 Des Moines Avenue. The property is further zone urban residential (UR). The Comprehensive Plan's Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends high-density, single-family residential development of the parcel. Vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of council. Before you tonight is an application for a use permit to allow a duplex residential unit at 1413 Duane Avenue, as the Chief Deputy City Clerk just indicated. This property is located at 1413 Des Moines Avenue, contains an existing structure, which was built, I believe, back in the 1950s and was originally built as a duplex. As you can see on the right on our display there, you have the zoning map, shows the location of the parcel, and it's right up adjacent to the eastbound lane there at 264. So if you're coming down Des Moines, if you went down South Street, turned left on Des Moines, went under the overpass there, it'd be the first lot on your left there. Contains existing structure there, and as I indicated, this was used as a duplex from the time it was originally constructed. And according to the city zoning ordinance, uses such as this require use permit are valid as long as that use continues unbroken. And if you have a period of time, which is two years or longer, uses that would require use permit lose their use permit status. And in this case, that happened. The structure was vacant for a period of time, as far as we can tell, at least two years before the current owner acquired it, and therefore duplex use would require reapproval of a use permit by City Council. Otherwise, the structure could only use as a single-family unit. Here's the proposed site plan. The requirement for a duplex would be to have four off-street parking spaces, which are shown on the site plan. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and considered this at their meeting on April the 5th, and by vote of six to zero, recommended approval. And that included five conditions, which are included in your staff report, and be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the application.
Bob, let me just ask you quickly. The new owner just purchased it, and he's the one applying for this.
That's correct.
He didn't have it and let it lapse. That was a pre-.
That is correct. He purchased it, and it was a vacant building sitting there.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Baldwin?
Okay.
This is a public hearing on item UP 1603. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak on UP 1603. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Okay. Very good. Is there a motion?
We're in need of a motion.
Move for approval.
We have a motion at a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically.
Very good.
This item has been approved five zero. Item B, UP 16-04, Simondsdale. Roger L. Cornet requests a use permit for a flea market at 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard. The property is zone neighborhood mixed use (NMU). The Comprehensive Plan's Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends low-to-medium-density single-family residential development of the parcel. Vision principle: sustainable neighborhoods and enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have speakers.
Hey, how are you doing, Sergeant?
Mayor Wright, members of City Council, it's a pleasure being back. This is an application for a use permit to operate a flea market at 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard, and what is proposed is to operate three days a week, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Excuse me. And just to, as you know, use permits run with the land and not with the owner, so just wanted to emphasize at the front end, part of what we do is look at any use permit, regardless of the ownership issues, anticipating that the use can continue on through multiple ownerships. So on the right is a zoning map of the area, and this property was zoned NMU back in January of this year, and I can explain that a little more should you desire that. But on the left is a photograph of the property. To the north is the Simondsdale Community, and these are photographs of two different sides of the street near the property. To the east is properties along Portsmouth Boulevard, and this is a section of Portsmouth Boulevard where there still are residences along the four-lane highway. So it's one of those transitional areas where you have residential, not only on Portsmouth, but essentially around on all sides to the north. To the south, you have a number of businesses, as well as multifamily development. And one of the tools that we use and rely on heavily is the Comprehensive Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan states for this particular corridor that it is a stable corridor, but encourages a more coherent, connected land-use pattern with transition to adjacent land uses, particularly residential. And another area of the Comprehensive Plan, it emphasizes that the city should be investing in visual improvements of the property, and I'll tie those comments in with my conclusions at the end. To the west is the Stewartevent Funeral Home, which was rezoned NMU, I want to say about two years ago. Both of those properties were zoned an office residential district and ended up in a high-density residential zoning, and thus both of them have since been rezoned to allow a slightly wider range of uses. This is a photograph of the property, and the area that's proposed for the flea market is to the left of the house. It's the office buildings sit close to City Park, and the flea market would be on the Stanley Road side of the property. As I said earlier, they've proposed to operate Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, obviously weather permitting because it's an outdoor use. And this is a photograph of the parking area that's associated with the office building. And just for your information, one of the issues that staff has raised is the issue of parking. The offices currently require something in the order of 17 parking spaces. The flea market actually requires all 32 spaces that are on the site, based on our parking requirements. So that's one of the reasons why staff has some concerns about this proposal. This is a site plan that just shows the relationship of the buildings to the parking, and then the area between the parking lot and Portsmouth Boulevard would be the vendor area. There are a number of conditions that have been suggested. At this point, due to the Comprehensive Plan issues that I mentioned a little earlier and concerns about the parking, the desire to improve the visual appearance of all of our major corridors, not just Portsmouth Boulevard but others, the staff did recommend to the Planning Commission denial. At the Planning Commission meeting in April, the Planning Commission heard a number of people, including the applicant, and actually recommended approval four to two with the conditions that you have in your packet and are attached to the manager's letter. Just to kind of go over some of the conditions, we've suggested that there should be field verification of where the flea market area would be conducted. That area should be behind the front face of the building, again, getting back to the visual appearance. The hours of operation are actually a little wider than what, a little broader than what had been requested of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And it gives a time for setup and breakdown before and after flea market events. We've suggested that the office and the flea market parking should be separate, and they should not occur at the same time, so there's not that conflict, and there's enough capacity in the parking lot to accommodate the flea market use. We've suggested a single permanent sign rather than multiple temporary signs. And then there are a number of conditions about keeping the site clean and not storing materials on the site, et cetera. With that, I'll conclude my comments and try to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any structure, plan, an overhang or something for this flea market?
At this time, no. What is proposed is open-air.
And so for him to conduct, or him or her to conduct a flea market, they need 32 parking spaces?
Correct.
And the parking that's available now, which is occupied for the offices, is 17?
That's the minimum required by the zoning ordinance. So what you've got is you've got 17 for the office, 32 for the flea market. What we've said is, okay, you shouldn't be operating the offices.
At the same time.
The offices shouldn't be occupied as long as the flea market is being conducted, and vice versa.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. And mind you, two of those offices, one is a real estate agency and one is a barber shop. Don't know many that close on a weekend. But this is, Mr. Hart, my question to you is, and my colleagues know and you know, I have issues with rezoning something without knowing what's going to happen there. And normally, you submit with a company, so we have some level of comfort about what's going to happen. So why didn't you submit a company this one? Why wouldn't it done simultaneously?
When I met with Mr. Cornet, I actually suggested that he apply for the rezoning and the use permit concurrently. And we had a discussion about all of that. It's not a requirement of the ordinance. He elected to do it separately, to first apply for the rezoning, which staff, Planning Commission, and City Council supported, and I believe it was the appropriate zoning for that property, given the corridor and so on. And I can't swear to this, but I believe we included flea markets in the uses that could be there with a special use permit in that initial report. But again, he was the one who elected to do it separately.
So had it was indicated to you at that time that the flea market, what was planned?
He had come in and asked about the zoning and doing a flea market, and I went through the process of rezoning and discussed within the process for the use permit. And I indicated they could occur concurrently, and he elected to not do them concurrently, but to do them in a two-step process.
So Mayor, let me explain, not necessarily, but why I support it in the first go-around. Part of the application that went to Planning Commission and to us on this said, the answer to question, the question on the application described the proposed use of the rezoned property, including the proposed types of site improvements, buildings, and proposed activities. This is the answer from the applicant. At this time, we have no definite plans. However, we want to hopefully build more modern office building in the future. We also have a grandson who is graduating college in pre-med this December, and he has expressed great interest in building a practice on this property once he completes medical school. We just want to have it as much in place as possible for him. That is why I support it, because I thought this almost is biblical, doing something for your children's children. Had I known that the plan for this was a flea market, I would never have supported the rezoning, because I don't want to see a flea market on that gateway. You know, that's the entry to City Park, the boat ramp, Spooky Smokey, Olive Branch Cemetery, and all that, and the list goes on. So I feel like this was deceptive. If they knew a flea market was the plan all the time, to put this in the application and now come back and try to do a flea market, I am not going to support it, in nobody way. Two-day, two, or a weekend after the Planning Commission meeting, which I attended, where some owners came up for businesses, I think the barber shop and the real estate agent, they came up and said that they would close on Fridays and Saturdays. I took a ride out there on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah, wide open.
Was met at the door by a gentleman from the barber shop and asked him, "Was it open?" He said, "Yes." I said, "Are you opening tomorrow?" He said, "Yes." So I proceeded to start to drive away, and the gentleman said, "Hold, wait, wait, the barber's right over there in the parking lot. He's right over there." So they yelled for me to come back, as if they thought I wanted to get a haircut. I simply wanted to find out, because I've been to barber shops all over the country occasionally, I've never seen one close on a Saturday. So that barber shop, and I sold real estate for a little while, wasn't very successful, so I had to do something else. But most of my time spent showing houses was on Saturday and Sunday, because that's when people don't work. So to tell me that all those 32 parking spaces can be available on Saturday and Sunday, and I go there and they're open on Friday, I cannot support this application.
Okay, very good. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I pass by Mr. Cornet's property quite often during the course of a week, as well as weekends, and I can honestly say that his is the best-kept piece of property in the vicinity. Also, right up the street, at a church, there have been flea markets, there have been car washes, pretty much five days a week, or maybe even six days a week, since it's a church. I don't think they wash cars on Sunday. But they're automobile repair places, a lot of activities, and I don't think a flea market, the type that Mr. Cornet is planning, is a temporary thing. I think if his grandson decides he wants to do something there, obviously Mr. Cornet has got enough room where he can build a building on that property. Flea markets by their nature aren't permanent deals, and in fact, it's stated that he's not going to build a structure. Is that correct?
At this point, no. He has made no indication of building a structure.
Except in his application, he did.
And as far as the parking's concerned, I've been by there on the weekends, and that, there's ample parking space. And as we know, flea market customers are transient, they come and go. They don't come and park their car and stay 12 hours or 10 hours. So I'm prepared to support it, and I don't think it deters the appearance of that gateway. In fact, Mr. Cornet's gateway is one of the better-looking gateways in our city. We need to go a long ways in getting the other ones to look as good as his is.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Yolanda Thomas.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda Thomas, and I live in the Brighton section of Portsmouth, Virginia. And Mr. Mayor and City Council, I come here actually to discuss the vote from the April meeting of the Planning Commission. So I was one of the four approval votes during that meeting. However, I want to, I came here today to urge you to vote to not approve this use permit for the following reasons, and Councilman Cherry kind of spoke on some of them. So after that meeting, I kind of did some research, went back, looked at the transcript, and Councilman Cherry is correct. In the zoning application, they do state that they were going to build a structure. They were going to build a, specifically a modern office building. During the, can I pass something out to? So what I'm passing out are the transcripts from the meeting, specifically related to what I'm going to state here. So during the meeting, I voted against based on the applicant telling me that they got conflicting information from several city departments. And as a citizen, I did not feel like that was fair to the landowners to go through this whole process, spend time and money, and be told that this is the right process to have their permanent flea market, just for us to disapprove it based on the recommendations from the Planning Department. But one of my main questions to the applicant was, what was the original reason for the rezoning? And that's on page 27, line 3.
Got it right here.
The applicant states right on line 5, they were told that's what we had to do. And my reason for asking them, and I further clarify further down on line 9, so your intent that you explained to the City Planning Department was that you were going to originally hold a permanent flea market. And again, you will see the applicant was in agreement, that they were told you need to go through a rezoning process, and then you need to go through the use permit. However, on the rezoning process, they clearly state that they did not have plans at this time. It says, "As of this time, we have no definite plans." So clearly, that's a misrepresentation of what we were, of what I was told during that Planning Commission meeting, and that's what I based my vote on. And because of that misinformation, I would like to, I can't change my vote, but I would like to urge you all to vote against this use permit. And one thing that Councilman Moody just mentioned was that Mr. Cornet is a good steward of the land, that they have one of the best properties. I don't deny that. However, as the Planning Department pointed out, a use permit goes with the land. It does not transfer with the owner, does not cancel by the owner. And for that, we had a lengthy discussion, so I urge you not to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your willingness to come up and speak. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
I just want to thank her for the courage to come up here and do that. Thank you.
I always want to say this, she was once for it, and then she was against it, right? Very good. Sounds familiar. All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My topic for tonight regards an approval of UP 1604, which addresses a request for the use permit for a flea market at 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard. Principles of Liberty 14 states that life and liberty are secure only so long as the right of property is secure. The right of property is not secure in Portsmouth. That means our life and liberty are not secure. The goal of the Planning Department is to deny a citizen the right to use his property in a free-market society. This is a prime example of government overreach. Here are the three things they say. One, a flea market would be an inappropriate transitional land use between commercial and residential property. The plan categorizes this section of Portsmouth Boulevard as stable. Stable defined from the Comprehensive Plan means good quality, little change occurring or predicted. Portsmouth Boulevard from Airline to Mayflower Road is classified as stable because it supports a mostly viable mix of non-residential and residential uses. Two, Portsmouth Boulevard is a major corridor where the city should invest in visual improvements. What the plan was addressing is that Portsmouth Boulevard is a gateway into the city from the Chesapeake side, and that it needs to invest visual improvements at the entrance to the city. 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard has nothing to do with visual improvements of the major corridor. Three, the last statement stated that there wouldn't be any economic justification to allow for a flea market at this location. One aspect of economic development is a policy intervention endeavor with aims of economic and social well-being of people whereby parties engage in exchange. Real estate tax for this property is almost $3,500 a year, plus personal property taxes coming from the dentist, the barber, the home care, hypnotherapist, and two relatives. Therefore, none of the stated reason. The Planning Department presented is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's policy. The plan does not deny a citizen of his right to use his property as he sees fit. As a result of my research, we need an audit of the Planning Department practices and implement organizational chart to coordinate work. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Coleman Young.
My name is Coleman Young. I reside at 602 North Street. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Let's step back a little bit. We're making this a little bit too complicated, and I'm coming before council because it's more an ask urging the council to take the whole picture, the whole situation. Planning made a decision, basically from what I hear, they feel that it's not aesthetically pleasing to have it on the Portsmouth Boulevard corridor, which I'll address in a second. But there are other facets in here. One is the quality of the person. Anybody that knows Roger Cornet, he's a quality person. He's conscientious. He wants to do best for the community, for himself. He's a businessperson. He's a hustler. When he worked at the shipyard, he worked two jobs. Here, anybody that knew him when he worked, with no tolls, he was consciously doing things for the benefit of the citizens. Number two is, the thing is, you know, he has a business, he's making rent, but this is a small deal. This is just 10 stalls. He gets $10 a stall, that's $100. I mean, for $100, he's got to call, answer phone calls, call people, be there to collect the money, he's got to set it up, he's got to set it down. I mean, he does it, and then you wonder, why is he doing it? He does it because he's a social person. He likes to be around people, he likes to have, he talks to the vendors, and all. So it's a social thing. You've mentioned in the mission at the beginning, quality of life. You have neighbors come, and they're talking to each other. It's like a little community get-together. And we don't have, it's like people talking over the back of a fence, or having a porch type of thing. Now let's address the thing about it's not aesthetically pleasing, it doesn't have the visual corridor. One thing, look, I could say my wife is beautiful. Mr. Moody? Mr. Moody could say she's ugly. It's just a judgment call. I mean, let's face it, this is what we're talking about. What you think is this aesthetically not pleasing, I do, all you're doing, you're coming up Portsmouth Boulevard, you're seeing tin booths there, that are there either on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, weather permitting, and then it's gone. I mean, why, why are we quibbling about this? And I strongly urge you to, the problem, too, is the restrictions. They got him rather than being in the front, where people come up Portsmouth Boulevard and see the booths and say, oh, that's good, let me stop. You've got him coming back this way. They don't have a visual contact until they're right there. By that time, they're going 30 miles an hour at Portsmouth Boulevard, oh, I say, oh, I can't make it, move on. I mean, this, this does not make any sense. I strongly urge you just to remove the restrictions, give the guy to make a little bit of money, have some vendors to come in there, and have their customers come to them. It's a very simple thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Our next speaker is Glenna Cornet.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of the council, and other officials. My name is Glenna Cornet. I live on Thelmaire Lane in the Park Manor section of Portsmouth. Of course, I'm here tonight to speak to you about the use permit for flea market and yard sale on our property at 5,000 Portsmouth Boulevard. And it would be for weekends only, namely, Fridays and Saturdays, and perhaps an occasional Sunday, depending on the weather the other two days. It was approved by the Planning Department with what some restrictions that I fully don't agree with. One item is a setback that they recommend, which a flea market tables or other daily structures cannot extend any further towards Portsmouth Boulevard than the front of the existing two-story brick office building. Excuse me, just a minute. It says, "No flea market stalls or merchandise associated with the flea market shall extend beyond the front face of the existing office building, and shall be set back at least 20 feet from the Stanley Road right-of-way," which we don't have a problem with the 20 feet from the Stanley Road right-of-way. Do have a problem with it not going any further than the front of the regular building. If you recall, when we and the city were fighting the tunnel tolls for the city of Portsmouth and the surrounding areas, we held several flea markets there each weekend, weather permitting, for a couple of years, in order to raise funds to pay the attorney to represent us for the no toll campaign on this, on this, was held, was held on this same property without restrictions, and nothing was ever said. Now that we have paid around $1,500 to get this far, the Planning Department has decided to restrict us. And I don't quite understand that. We never bothered anything. Anyway, the second item is a signage. The Planning Department has said that we will not be allowed to use any portable signs, but that we must be limited to one permanent site, which will have to be approved by the zoning administrator. It just says, "Temporary or portable signage shall be prohibited." The Planning Department says this flea market yard sale would be considered as a permanent business. Why? It'll only be on Fridays, Saturdays, and occasional Sunday, with weather permitting. In rainy weather and the cold weather of the winter, it's very unlikely that any kind of sale will be held. I don't know of too many people who want to stand in the cold and wind to sell something with the hopes that someone or anyone will just stop by to look at their wares. Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
Can I address Mr. Cherry?
No, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Have a good day. Mr. Chair, you may have a chance. Mr. Chair, here's.
Well, I just want to say, at the Planning Commission meeting, which I attended, and I'm looking at the transcript now, too, you all were in agreement with all the conditions. And now you come up and tell us you're not in agreement with them. I'm looking at the transcript right now, and if y'all haven't, page 35, line 8 through 12, where, I think, I think your daughter might have been at the mic, but I think you all were consulted, and you said all the condition was fine. So, so this story, this story is just changing too much, too much for me. First, it's gonna be a building, then it's gonna be a flea market on first Tuesday, first Tuesday last month, you agree with all the conditions, and now you don't. So, I just can't support this. I'm sorry.
We were not giving that list until that day of the Planning Commission meeting. We didn't have it ahead of time. And as far as building the structure, it, for our grandson, and he just graduated from four years of college in pre-med, do you have any idea, Mr. Cherry, how long it takes to go through medical school? Long time, longer than it does to go through law school.
You put that in your application, I didn't. You signed the application saying that's what you were gonna do on the property. I didn't do that. I'm reading what you put your signature to, what you said you were gonna do. And I took you at your word.
All right. Exactly how did I state it?
And now, and now you're going back on your word.
Well, exactly how did I state? I'm not going back on my word, sir. I said that in the future, we hope to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to point the fact that your story is changing.
Thank you. Ms. Cornet, Mr. Moody, do you need her?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cornet?
Ms. Cornet.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
You know, during the effort to stop the tolls, you're correct, you had a flea market out there every weekend.
Every weekend.
Did you ever have any complaints from any of the neighbors?
No, sir. The neighbors all said they sure were glad to have something out there so they could get together and, you know, socialize and meet their neighbors. And they said that it was one of the greatest places to have it because there was, it was not difficult for people who were disabled, wheelchairs, elderly, and we had a lot of those people coming in.
And my other question goes back to the conditions. Given the choice of denial or acceptance of the conditions, are you, are you all right with that?
The only thing that I'm.
I know you don't like the conditions, but that's not a question.
I mean, they had a whole list of conditions. We haven't complained or said anything negative about any of them, except these two particular ones. And when we had, and we said we would have it like nine, nine tables. Before, there were a lot more than that. And as far as the parking goes, there were notices, notes from the people who are there stating that the dentist office is closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The only one who is there on Friday regularly is the Helping Hands Home Services, and they will use one car, that's in a statement. The realtors are, one's getting ready to leave because he is in bad shape, and he can't continue to go up the stairs, so he will be leaving at the end of June. And they were only there to come to check their mail, because then the other one is still, he's not able to go up the steps much either.
Mr. Moody, another question.
Well, I guess my question, yes or no, you're willing to comply with the conditions if approved?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Just want to point out, the flea market was illegal when it was going on.
Thank you.
Well, we asked about it, and they said, no, there wasn't a problem with it.
I saw a lot of my colleagues out there.
Oh, yes, a whole lot of you.
Good night. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Kathy Revel.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, and members of city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kathy Revel, and I reside at 422 Crawford Street. I would like to urge approval of the use permit for this use. The Planning Commission did vote in approval for this use permit with conditions, and this property sits right across the street from a commercial property. In fact, the whole corridor has commercial properties up and down it. Mr. Cornet has had several flea markets for nonprofits and churches there, and he even sponsored events of flea markets for the no tolls effort. Now, he wants to use his property for himself, and only on the weekends. I know that he will leave the property at the end of the weekend, in the same condition that you see it in the pictures. He takes very good care of his property. He's followed all the steps of getting the zoning at great expense to him. Now, all he needs is your approval. I thank you for your careful consideration for approval of this item.
Thank you, Ms. Revel.
Our next speaker is Teri Danaher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, staff. I am Teri Danaher, and I'm up here partly because I am the volunteer manager of the farmer's market, so I have some experience, and I travel over to grab people from the flea market that, that happens downtown every first Saturday of the month. The other reason I'm up here is because I was involved, I was slightly involved in the no tolls stuff, and worked with Roger and Glenna partly on the flea markets there. And I would point out that we would have been paying the full tolls a year before we actually started paying anything if it hadn't been for Roger and Glenna and things like the flea markets they were running there. I noted that the Planning Commission passed this, and I would encourage you to also do so. I disagree with the same conditions that Glenna brought up, partly because of my experience in the farmer's market. We have temporary signs because we're only there once a week. So, we, I get up at 5:30 in the morning on Saturdays and go and put out signs and take them down after the market is over. There is no reason to have a permanent sign on something like that. I would also point out that there's a lot of land there, and it is in a very commercial district. And my guess is that in the future, those small houses that you see that are there now are probably gonna be replaced ultimately by businesses, because that is such a major business corridor. Also, there are flea markets and other things going on there going down that street. I noticed that when I was driving out to the property in the past. And the other thing is, I look at it from an income point of view, because having gone to the flea market downtown and seen the money generated there, part of which comes to the city of Portsmouth, and the rest of which goes to the state, all those sales, anything that those people make has sales tax attached to it, and we get a portion of that. That also applies to the farmer's market, by the way. Our vendors have licenses, and they pay a portion of tax to the city of Portsmouth as well as to the state. So, we're talking about income here on something that is obviously gonna be temporary, because we're all temporary, and some of us are older than the rest of us. And I would say that, that they have been talking about putting a building on this for a long time, but for the future generations of Cornets, not for the current generation of Cornets. So, this, this really would not be a permanent situation in any way, shape, or form. So, again, I urge you to support them, as they have supported the city so well in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1604. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please go forward, give your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak on this item. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
Motion for denial.
Okay, there's a motion for denial.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically.
For denial.
For denial. This item has been denied by a vote of 4-1. Mayor, members of city council, did you all want this item to come back on the next meeting, June 14th?
No.
For a second reading?
Absolutely not. Thank you.
City manager's report, 16-161, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the Virginia E-911 Services Board, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2016-17 Grants Fund for use by the Police Department for training for the Emergency Communications Unit. Vision principle, efficient service delivery, electronic roll call, and I have no registered We're in need of a motion.
We're in need of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted, 5-2. Item 16-162, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $60,000 of the.
Madam Clerk, did you just say 5-2?
5-0. I'm sorry, 5-0.
Just for the record. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You may continue.
I apologize. 16-162, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $60,000 of telephone commission revenue in the FY 2016-17 General Fund operating budget for use by the Sheriff's Office. Vision principle, efficient service delivery, electronic roll call. I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Gudaldejutrowski.
Good evening, council and fellow citizens. I'm opposed to this measure, but I'm not quite sure how to couch that opposition in a way that really gets to the core of the matter. Let me explain that this is yet another tax on the poor. The commission are the proceeds from the telephone service that's provided to the jail. And so, whenever an inmate at the jail has a call to make, it has to be a collect call. And so, the people who are actually paying these fees are the families and the friends of people incarcerated. Now, let me point out that in a jail, unlike a prison, you have people who may not have been convicted of anything. They are being held awaiting trial. And in our system of jurisprudence, in theory, you are innocent until proven guilty. So, we have people who are being charged exorbitant rates to make phone calls, as I've pointed out to you on a previous occasion. I can call a mobile phone in Sweden for less than these people are calling across town. So, what happens? The sheriff gets, and this is not just our sheriff, this is every sheriff that runs a jail in this Commonwealth. They get a commission, as it says here in the background. The Portsmouth Sheriff's Office receives a commission from the inmate telephone system. This funding helps offset the Sheriff's Office general fund budget. Now, the right thing to do, but I doubt that you have the authority to do this, is to put this into a fund to offset the costs that inmates are charged for telephone service. But, this being a Dillon Rule state, that's probably not an option. So, my second recommendation would be to memorialize the Sheriff's Office and ask him to do what the Commonwealth has done. Governor McAuliffe announced in December that the average call rates were now lower than they had been for years. The average price per minute at the state level is 4 cents. Memorialize the sheriff to do what the Commonwealth has done and lower the rates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Dr. Patton, just want to make sure so the public is clear on this. Is this a pass-through fund?
No, it's not. It's passive.
So.
Put your mic on, please, Dr. Patton. Thank you.
Is this a fee that the city is charging, or the Sheriff's Department?
This, this is total through the Sheriff's Department, and I was getting ready to say it's an inmate, national inmate process. Inmate is not the word, but this, this system that is set up for the use of inmates in prisons and jails, it's a national process that it's set up. With the sheriff, and in the state of Virginia, the Sheriff's Office by orchestration through the, I guess it would say, the comp board or whatever governance, these are funds that legally he has a right to.
Right. That's what, that's what I'm saying. So, in essence, those, these are revenues generated by the Sheriff's Department that this, through the, that the city. So, in essence, these are revenues generated by the Sheriff's Department that the city has to release to the sheriff.
That's right.
So, it's not like these are city-generated funds.
Yeah, no, they're not.
So, it's more like a pay.
That's right.
Thank you.
So, really, the argument is to the Sheriff's Department.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, Mr. Dejutrowski.
Okay, we have no additional speakers on this item. We're in need of a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted, four one. 16-163, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Programmatic Project Administration Agreement Extension Addendum to the Revenue Sharing Programmatic Agreements with the Virginia Department of Transportation, Guarantee Funding for the Churchland Bridge Replacement Project and the Paradise Creek Bridge Replacement Project. Vision Principle, Efficient Service Delivery, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted, five zero. 16-164, Adoption of a Resolution Approving the Issuance by the Portsmouth redevelopment and Housing Authority of Its Revenue Bonds for the Acquisition and Renovation of a Portion of the Dale Homes Apartments Housing Facility Located in the City of Portsmouth, Virginia. Vision Principle, Sustainable Neighborhoods, Electronic Roll Call, and I have Mr. James Gross and Mr. Brian Donahue here for counsel if you all have any questions. We do not have any registered speakers on this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please conduct yourselves electronically. This item has been adopted, five zero. New Business, 16-165, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
Not to report at this meeting.
Okay. 16-166, Items Submitted by Council Members.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just want to let council know that last Thursday, I attended the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board Meeting, and just want to bring the issue before council, particularly the city attorney, that there was quite a bit of discussion on the GPDC, the Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation. And also, Dr. Patton, the issue came up as far as the city's representation on the GPDC, and it wasn't clear as far as our representation at meetings. But the bigger issue that was discussed was the role of the three partners in the GPDC, which I would like, if there's no objection from council, for our attorney to come back and brief council on that relationship. According to the meeting, that entity is comprised of Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing, the Portsmouth Partnership, and the city. And the question becomes, how does a private organization obtain unilateral access to economic development deals in the city? There was some discussion, once again, on the Holiday Insight and the debt that the city paid off on that site, and commissioners were questioning whether that property is sold, the profit sharing that would occur. And I think that that's something that council needs to be made aware of, is if you have private developers in this organization, but yet the city paid off the total debt, then how can they profit? And so, I think that needs to come to discussion. It wasn't resolved at the meeting at all, and I know that's an issue we've discussed before in the past under previous management that we never really got clarity on.
So, is your question, what is the city's role in this GPDC organization that consists of the City of Portsmouth, redevelopment and housing, and the Portsmouth Partnership?
Right. Right. And also, within there, how is it that this one private entity was able to get unilateral access to economic development in the city without obtaining any type of debt obligation, particularly with the Holiday Insight?
Can we, Madam Manager?
I was going to ask, Dr. Whitaker, just taking notes, you indicated that it was indicated there was no city representative on the GPDC. Was council to appoint somebody to it, or who's the rep?
That was the question.
That's a question we need to answer.
Right. They're having these meetings in which the city is supposed to be a third partner, but we're not represented.
I can say that the first week that I came on board in September, that was on my schedule that on Thursdays, I think they meet every Thursday. I went one Thursday, but I have not been back because that was not assigned, as you all have put me on committees and things to go through every month.
Right. Right. I think we need to have some serious discussion about the relationships there and the profit sharing and debt carrying of that organization.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. While you add it, you might want to add to the list PDC, Portsmouth Development Corporation. There's another one there.
PDC?
PDC.
Who is that?
Just what I said, Portsmouth Development Corporation.
I mean, who are they?
Well, they end with GPDC, and some of those entities exist for tax reasons. So, I would like for the city manager to brief the public, since it's been brought up in public, why they are in existence and what their role is as far as their contribution to the city.
Ms. Moody, are you done?
Yeah, but that's not what I wanted to speak on.
Okay.
Can I just piggyback on? I just said, is that another quasi-governmental organization which we're appointing people to the boards?
As far as I know, in the past, either the city manager or deputy city manager has participated within those organizations.
And that's not the GPDC?
That's not the GPDC. That's the PDC.
PDC, okay.
A lot of acronyms there. What I really wanted to mention, Mayor, I had the honor of attending the Chamber of Commerce's Small Business of the Year Awards Luncheon today, and we had two businesses that received awards. One's a brand-new business called Rocket Bike Marketing. Some of you may have heard of it. The owner and founder of it is Max Greenhood, Charles Greenhood's son. He was honored with the Appenural Award of the Year, and Smiley's Heating and Cooling won the Portsmouth Small Business of the Year Award. So, they've been in business for 30 years. So, Portsmouth was well represented in the award category today.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Let me say that I believe this weekend coming up is probably one of the most exciting weekends in this city's history. We have, during the Memorial Day weekend, I think about four or five years ago, after Norfolk decided to disband the Afran Festival, we moved our Yumosha Festival to that same weekend to not only capitalize on a lot of people that came to the Hampton Roads region for that particular purpose, but also because of the weather. And I think in our Yumosha festivals, we had countless consistent weeks of rain that bothered and hampered attendance. And so, this coming weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're having our 26th Annual Yumosha Festival. We're also having our 132nd Annual Memorial Day Parade, which is the longest continuous-running parade in the country. That will be on Monday morning at 10 o'clock. And on Saturday morning, we also have the Elizabeth River Run and Children's Museums Fun Run, which will be conducted Saturday morning right out here along Crawford. This is an exciting weekend. We do a lot. We show and put our best foot forward. Attendance at our last several Yumosha festivals have gone through the roof. And so, and this time, we have, as our elders, as you know, Yumosha means unity, and in order for us to conduct a festival in the African tradition, the elders must give you permission. And so, we have asked our elders this year for that permission, and they will grant that, hopefully, if we're all on our Ps and Qs, on Friday at 5:00, 5:30. And our elders is Ms. Carolyn N. Ward and Mr. Fred L. Hines. And so, and again, we've got a bunch of activities set up. Sunday, our Gospel Fest that kicks off, that's also extremely popular. We want to encourage all of our citizens to please come out and enjoy some great fun, some great food, and fellowship. And again, the Elizabeth River Run. Part of those proceeds go to our Children's Museum, which is another huge success in this region. Since the renovation, I think about four or five years ago, we did about a $14 million renovation to our Children's Museum, and this Elizabeth River Run has played a vital role in this. And so, again, and on our Memorial Day Parade, our master ceremony is going to be Dr. Albert Williams, citizen of Cavalier Manor. And our grand marshal is going to be the Rear Admiral of the Commander's 5th Coast Guard District, Meredith L. Austin. And so, she's going to be the grand marshal for this year's parade, and we're going to have an exciting weekend, and weather permitting, and I understand it's going to be pretty good. I got that on good bishop. And Dr. Whitaker, y'all help us with that. With that, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to speak on Dr. Whitaker's comment about trying GPDC.
Oh, okay. You can interrupt if you get something in there. I don't mind, so we can keep those together.
Yeah, I thought you were ignoring me. Sorry. But my thing to Dr. Whitaker's point, it appears that there have been meetings going on, we haven't been participating. You could be committing funds or obligating the city to things. Part of that, if you're okay with Dr. Whitaker, I'd like to add to your request that they also bring back, how do we dissolve that relationship? If we're not participating and things are happening, I don't want somebody out there making decisions for us and we're not at table. So, I'd like to, if you're okay, to amend that to say, how do we dissolve our relationship and at least get the city out of it?
Right. I agree with that. Under previous management, you may remember there was a presentation made to shift property from GPDC to the EDA, and the question was, if we're going to do that, how is it that the private entity isn't going to be responsible for the debt obligation, but yet they could profit?
Right.
And so, I'm totally in agreement with that.
Yeah, to your point. It's like we're just paying, and everybody else is-
Is profiting.
Profiting, yeah.
Point we'll take. Okay, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I think Dr. Patton had a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am?
Mayor, I wanted to say, in regard to the Yumosha Festival, this will be the 26th annual, and that assignment was given to me 26 years ago in June by former city manager Wayne Orton, who went to Annapolis, Maryland, and there was the Kintakunte Festival, and he came back and he says, "Dr. Patton, I want a festival. I want it to be a cultural festival, and I want it to be held in September." So, only had three months to pull it together, and we were out there in the parking lot, but we did host the festival, and it has grown 26 years later to what it is. But it was his foresight who started the festival. I thought it would be fitting to recognize that.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring to council's attention and Dr. Patton and the citizens. Last week, on May the 17th, which is the anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education, 62nd anniversary, Mark Morial, who is the president of the National Urban League, made the address at the 40th anniversary of the National Urban League State of Black America. And at the address, Mr. Morial, who is the former mayor of New Orleans, pointed out that there needs to be a trillion-dollar investment in our urban cities, and that touches on Portsmouth. He pointed out how, right after World War II, we invested something like $13 billion as a country into rebuilding Western Europe, which today is about $130 billion. How we invested about $50 billion in rebuilding Afghanistan, and how many of us are aware that we invested $400 billion with the TARP in building out some of the financial institutions under the Bush administration. And so, he pointed out that there are some points that these urban communities need to be addressing, and I would like, if council, no objection from council, I would like to submit this on the record to the city manager to look at the 14 points that the National Urban League is suggesting that we as cities, and as a nation, but it begins with our cities, that we address, particularly in urban areas such as ours where we have significant poverty. Matter of fact, the address is dealing with from poverty to prosperity. And so, I want to submit this for Dr. Patton to take a look at. Some of these initiatives, we've already begun some discussion on, such as a living wage, early childhood education. And so, I want to pass this on, and if we could get some update where we are as a city so that we're making sure we're on the cutting edge and being progressive with what we need to do.
Okay. All right, very good.
And I'd like to submit that on the record also, so I'll give one to the clerk.
All right. Very good.
16-167, Report on Penny Items. Dr. Patton?
Yes. At our May 10th meeting, we had Mr. Abbottmore, citizen, to come forward regarding his property on 204 Monitor Road. Both our ambusives woman, Mrs. Hoag, and our planning director, Mr. Baldwin, met with the citizen to answer his questions, and Mrs. Hoag has indicated that the citizen is to follow up with her. But at this time, we have addressed and answered the questions, and it's in the summary report that you had.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
16-168, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Joe Wright.
And as Mr. Wright takes the podium, I want to recognize our school board members in our audience, and I apologize, the Honorable Costello Williams. Would you please stand, Ms. Williams? Let's give her a hand. Thank you. Good to see you. Mr. Wright, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Honorable Mayor Wright, City Council Members, Dr. Patton, City Attorney, and all others assemble. Joseph R. Wright, Cavalier Manor, Section of Portsmouth. Mr. Mayor, I would like to sincerely apologize to you for my outburst at the council meeting last month. Since politicians don't lie, Councilman Whitaker misspoke during that meeting when he stated that Dr. Holliday and Mr. Joe Wright worked to remove the monument on Court Street at High. To correct that record, the statement was not true, and I would like to correct that record so that future generations perusing those proceedings would not be receiving- false information. Although I was, at that time, in favor of removing the monument, and I stated so at that meeting last month, but I never worked with Dr. Holliday to try to remove it. However, after serving stateside in two army bases, namely Fort Bragg and Fort Gordon, named after Confederate generals, there are at least three more, namely Fort Benin, Georgia, Fort Hood, Texas, and Fort Lee, right here in Virginia. One of those army bases was commanded most recently by a black general, born and raised in Cavalier Manor, and a graduate of Manor High School.
That is.
He didn't take down any monuments while he was on those bases. After those facts, I now propose that in November, put this monument item in question on the ballot, and let the citizens of Portsmouth decide whether to remove the Confederate monument or let it stay where it is. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Let me just say, and I, I appreciate you for coming up and correcting the record. I believe that was Dr. Holliday and.
Dr. Hugo Orns.
And Dr. Hugo Orns, former Vice Mayor of Chesapeake.
That's right.
But a longtime citizen and educator, dentist, and civil rights leader, who were the two back during that time.
Absolutely.
But thank you for coming up, sir. And Dr. Whitaker? Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, since this is also being videotaped, I thought that, Mr. Wright, that your outburst last week, I figured you were going to come back and address that the way you should have. And so, what I did, I went back and looked at the videotape of June the 23rd, 2015, which the public can access also. And during that video, you come up and you, you are called on to speak at the 1 hour 31st second point of that video. And within that, 1 hour, the, within that video, 1 hour 31 minutes, I'd say, at that point, you begin speaking, and you make a statement here that I quote. You said that, "Councilman Whitaker, I had that on my list about that Confederate monument that's on the corner of High and Court Street. We tackled that almost 50 years ago. I think you were a little child then. Dr. Holliday spearheaded that at the time. Nothing became of it, became of it, but I think right now, the time is right to do that, and I thank you for bringing it up."
You're absolutely correct.
Right. And so, when you say that I misrepresented you, you stated here, "We tackled that." And then.
What I mean, when I said, "We," we as a people tackled that.
I didn't speak across you, because what you just said was that I misstated what you said, as if I was intentionally trying to make a conclusion that wasn't true. When you stood up here and said, "We tackled it," and then you invoked Dr. Holliday, it gave the appearance that you were working with Dr. Holliday on the removal, and then you stated that the time is right for what I'm doing. And then, if you go back and look at that tape, you came back and addressed it again at the end of your comments, and you said, "Councilman Whitaker, let's do something about that monument. It's time for it now. I can even recall a few years ago, somebody came and blackface all of the statutes that was on the monument." And I'm quoting you, "I think it was for them. The city paid thousands of dollars to correct that problem. Well, I don't know whether the word is correct, that problem, or not, because in my opinion, it was thousands of dollars that was wasted. So, let's get rid of that monument. I think the time is right now." Those are your words verbatim.
Absolutely.
I don't have, look, I didn't, I didn't get this far in life by stepping on other folks' backs and misrepresenting them.
You're misrepresenting my words, though, Councilman.
I spoke, I spoke your sentiment, and I quoted what you said here. So, I think what you're trying to do and skew this as if I'm trying to misrepresent you, how does that profit me? What do I gain by misrepresenting you? I didn't get up here by representing you, so why would I misrepresent you?
Do you want answers?
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
I'm making a state, I'm making a statement to you.
Do you want answers?
No, sir. No, sir, because you made a, you made a statement.
Because you, you were given the opinion that I worked with Dr. Holliday. When I said "we," we as a people, we as a black people, worked on that monument. I did not work directly with Dr. Holliday and Dr. Hugo Orns. And I also stated at that time that I was in favor of moving the monument. My mind changed. After hearing the arguments back and forth, I said, "Let the people decide. Have a referendum in November, and let them vote it up or down."
Right.
I didn't represent any of my words. I did not misrepresent any of my, I'm not a lawyer.
I didn't misrepresent you. I didn't misrepresent, I didn't, I did not intentionally try to misrepresent your statement.
Well, you did.
That's all I'm saying. Well, I don't think I did.
It was intentionally or not, you did.
I think when citizens go back and look at the video, they'll see that what I said was true.
And that's why I'm here tonight, to correct the video.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good night.
Any more questions?
An apology accepted.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, ma'am clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Dr. Patton, and Mr. Ashberry, citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Ursula Murphy, a resident and registered voter of the city of Portsmouth. As someone who routinely comes up here to share all the good that goes on this, in this city, sadly, that's not the case tonight. The handouts that I just gave you pertain to a recent conversation that was had on Facebook, and more specifically, in the group One Portsmouth. While I suspect that some of you may have seen the exchange presented, and in light of the time restraints of a non-agenda speaker, I will therefore go through the timeline to save you the time of following along. Thursday, April the 26th, 2016, after the city council meeting, I came upon the PowerPoint presentation that was supposed to be given by the former city auditor regarding the waste management findings. I took pictures of that PowerPoint presentation, and at 10:40 PM that night, I posted those pictures in the group One Portsmouth with the comment, "So, explain why we were not allowed to hear this." After much discussion by many people, both that night and the following Wednesday, in which I repeat, I never mentioned anyone's name, and you'll see that in those documents. At 5:20 PM on Wednesday, the 22nd, or 27th, rather, I received a private message from Councilman Moody stating, "Don't know what you're implying, but I already have an attorney who can add your name as well. I know you are upset that the mayor lost his auditor last night, but I don't think you want a libel suit." This message was accompanied by a screenshot of a comment, as you can see in the documents. I received two more private messages from Mr. Moody, and you'll see those. I will say again, I never mentioned his nor anyone else's name in any of those documents. So, tonight, Mr. Moody, I'm going to ask you to resign, or the city council sanction you for conduct on becoming a council member for threatening a citizen with the lawsuit. Because as the magistrate informed me, his comments were not criminal, they were freedom of speech, yet I should consult an attorney regarding a possible civil suit. I do not think that the citizens would welcome another suit against a sitting councilman who felt it necessary to threaten a citizen. Lastly, I indicated in my first response to the private message that I received from Mr. Moody, that I would investigate further, and found that Mr. Moody has been real employed by RDS. So, I ask Mr. Moody, who are you working for? Former city employees or yourself? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Murphy, you're, you're, you're a frequent, like myself, you're on Facebook quite a lot. And this is not all that you had on Facebook. In fact, one of the, and you initiated the conversation, and I see my name there. I stand by exactly what I said. I won't walk it back whatsoever. You, you were making a lot of insinuations that you quite frequently do, and it's nothing here that I will walk back. And you know, you, you need to, don't beat around the bush. You initiated the conversation, someone that you condoned added my name to it, and I will defend it. And when you talk about freedom of speech, I think more than anybody sitting up here, I'm very aware of freedom of the speech. I'm the only one that's paid the price for freedom of speech, and I will continue to defend it, and I will continue to speak my mind, whether it's on Facebook or from this council. Because a lot of what I hear is stuff that I don't like, and hopefully, the citizens will help correct that come November, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moody, I have no problem with freedom of speech. However, those documents will show the complete conversation, both that night and the next night. What I have a problem with is being threatened with a lawsuit when I never mentioned your name. You, in turn, shared that initial post and put my name out there, which caused other citizens to comment and disparage me. That I have a problem with. I never mentioned your name. I never mentioned any other council member's name. Another citizen mentioned your name, not me, sir. So, for you to threaten me with a lawsuit is unconscionable, and perhaps you need to consider retirement.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, do you want to respond?
Ms. Ursula Murphy, I won't consider retirement, and in fact, I stay by, I will not walk back what I said on Facebook and to your postings. And when you make similar postings, expect a similar reply from me, and I won't back down from it. So, have a good evening.
Thank you. And just for the record, you mentioned your employment. Is that for the record, you are employed by a company that we were auditing?
Yes.
Is that yes or no? Just for the record, I'm just asking. I don't want.
My employment with RDS took place in March.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know when you assigned the auditor to RDS, Mayor, but yeah, I've worked for.
You were working for them.
And I think I have every right to work for RDS, so.
Thank you, sir, for the answer. Mr., Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was what I wanted to follow up on, because Ms. Murphy made a public statement about Mr. Moody's employment, and the fact that we were in an auditing process, and also, there were some actions taken as that company was being audited. And there were decisions that were made about the employment of the auditor prior to a report being released that was making some implications about the company that Mr. Moody has now told us he worked for. And at no time in those discussions was it ever disclosed what his relationship was. This is my first hearing of that. That's very troubling, considering the process we just went through. And so, I'm going to ask if there's no objection from council that the city attorney moves to confirm that, so that we can make sure that there's no third-party liability on the part of council because of what has just come to our attention.
Mr. Moody?
Mr. Whitaker, I have in my possession an opinion from the Commonwealth attorney, saying that my, nothing is wrong with my employment at RDS. I'm not in management. To me, it's a, a retirement job. I'm a sales rep there, and I wasn't even aware that an audit was going on, and I, I don't know when the audit started, but my employment didn't start there until, until March. And also, you raised a lot of questions in your windows, again, at our last meeting, and to Dr. Patton's credit, she's answered those. And Mayor, I'd like to read those. Might take a while, but I would like to read them. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, you're referring to the questions that Dr. Whitaker raised last meeting that the manager has responded to.
Yes, about the, about the audit.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, he raised, he raised an internal control issue. Says no instrument, and this is Dr. Whitaker's allegation, "No instrument in place to measure the tonnage of outgoing and incoming trucks as required by the contract."
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just a point, just, just for clarity, those are not my allegations. Those were points taken directly out of the auditor's presentation. So, that's not what I'm alleging. I was stating what the auditor said.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I would, I would question the auditor's knowledge of an industry, in, in the waste industry, to be able to perform a professional audit. But let me finish. You're speaking over me.
And also, a point of order, I, I think until we get it resolved about Mr. Moody's employment, he's not in a position to discuss with council an entity in which we're not certain what his employment status is. And so, I would, I would ask, Mr. Mayor, that we wait to get that confirmed before we have what may be allegedly an employee speaking to us about his company as a sitting council person.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker, that point is well-taken.
No, that point, that point is.
Mr. Moody, we want to defer those answers and that reading until we do get some clarification from the attorney. He does raise a valid issue, and as the chair, and the only one that can respond to a point of order, I'm going to grant that. So, can we wait? And we will allow you at the next meeting, once we get a ruling from the attorney about whatever it is that he's involving, then we'll allow you to do that. Okay?
Mayor, my light is on.
Your light is on.
Okay. Until we find out from the attorney, my status of employment. So, what, what does that mean?
Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah. That means that there may be a possible conflict of interest of you speaking with us on this issue.
That this issue was an audit that you made public, and I'm not speaking to it, I'm just reading the information that Dr. Patton got back with us on. You, you released it publicly, but it seems like to me that you don't want the public to hear what the real facts are.
Let's make sure we're clear on that. You're the one that, that not want the audit to be presented. So, let's, let's make sure we're clear on that.
Okay. Let, let me be clear if I can. The reason I granted his point of order, Mr. Moody, is we want to make sure that we get the opinion from the Commonwealth attorney and exactly what it stated, because I'm not clear. I think it talked about, because you were not in the contracting business, that that was not a conflict for you working there. And again, I'm not in a position to speak on that. That's why I granted his point. If you are the boss of someone that's conducting an investigation or an audit of a company that you're working for, that could be, could be. So, the reason I granted what he just said is so the attorney can take the opinion that we got from the Commonwealth attorney, as well as your role with what you knew and when you knew it, with this auditor, and then we will proceed with answering those questions for the public. Okay? So, that's the final on that. Do you have anything else you want to speak on that? Because we do want those answers out there, Mr. Moody.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a letter from a Commonwealth attorney.
Okay.
Saying that my employment with RDS is not in conflict. I'm not in management. I didn't know, and you're the one that assigned the auditor there, so you know the date. I don't, I, I'm not even certain I was working there when the audit was actually performed. So, Mr. Attorney, I want an opinion. If, if your opinion is different from the Commonwealth attorney, then we're going to have a problem.
Okay. Okay.
Because you're trying to restrict my employment.
No, no, that's not what I'm doing.
Yes, you are.
I'm trying to make sure that we're on legal grounds with what we're doing.
What legal grounds? This is a public audit.
Right.
And Dr. Patton gave us the answers to the audit. There were questions raised in the audit by the former auditor. She answered the questions. I wanted to share them with the public. He shared the, he shared the auditor's findings. Hers contradicted a lot of what we were told, so...
And we will address that in the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
I'll post it online. How about that? Okay.
Yes, sir. Are you done?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that Mr. Moody understands that the public is a lot wiser than you think. For you, for you to, for you to try to inflame their emotion by insinuating somehow we're trying to limit your employment, you know that's not what it's about.
I know exactly what that is about.
It's purely about whether there's a conflict with someone who is employed speaking to an issue that involves his company. The letter you have from the Commonwealth attorney was from your previous position, not your present position. And so we need an updated opinion on that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Moody?
Once again, I wasn't speaking, I was speaking about a public audit that was made public by you, Mr. Whitaker. And Dr. Patton, to her credit, she got the facts. And the facts differ from what we were told by the auditor. So there lies the problem, and probably there lies the reason he is a former auditor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moody. All right, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Randy Bailey.
Yes, my last name is Bailey, and I can be ringmaster at the circus. Thank you. I was going to speak on Memorial Day. It started out as Declaration Day and Remembrance Day. But I've heard rumors about the monument again, being in secret squirrel session. And no, it didn't come from Moody, so you can't censure him. But I would like to remind certain people, there are 619 families in this community who are direct descendants of people who that tombstone represent. That's a tombstone. And it was erected on the basis of Memorial Day, because Memorial Day started with families back in 1868 going to cemeteries with a picnic basket and a blanket to the graves of their veterans that had fallen during the war. And they would remember their family members. And it carried on for a good number of years. That monument was put up because those families don't have any tombstones to go to. So they would block off Court Street, and they would have a block party where the families would gather, and they would remember their ancestors, their fathers, their brothers, their sons. And that was their start of Memorial Day. And I'd like us to remember that that monument is to dead people. Has nothing to do with racism, just like there are plenty of cemeteries around here to dead people, and there are veterans in those cemeteries. So instead of going to your barbecues and your baseball games and all the other things that people now go to, instead of going to Hanes and buy a couch, go to the cemetery and remember the veterans. Remember the people who gave you the right to sit up there in those chairs and make some pretty foolish decisions sometimes. But it's your right to sit up there and do that. And when it comes around election time, I'm going to go around to those 619 families and remind them who's trying to get their tombstone removed. Because maybe they'd like to join me in a class action federal suit to have your family's tombstones removed. And let's see how many veterans support next Memorial Day parade, because maybe I C Norcom High School Band will be the only thing in it. Thank you.
Good night, Mr. Bailey.
Our next speaker is Clyde Toler.
All elected officials and to the citizen of Portsmouth. I don't know whether I want to be up here now. But anyway, good evening. I got something to come to you tonight with. I got the envelope here, the names for the election coming up. I'm going to seal it tonight before you. I'm going to open it after November, after the election. So I will pass tonight a recall list for a councilman. They want to start it during the time that we vote, or we can wait after we vote. After night, I think we better do it while we voting. But anyway, there has been a lot of disrespect between council and some citizens. But council, since the last two years, you have been, I've been coming to council since eight or four, you have been the worst council I ever stood before in my life. And this does not, we are going to be all in the paper again tomorrow. Look, go into a place back there and iron out these things. Don't bring this mess out here before the public and all the people like this. This is a disgrace. Now, I know some of us have came up here and been respectful to the council. You members on council have been disrespectful to one another, calling another idiots, fool, and even got into people's family and all. This is wrong. Because this mess you're doing, doing nothing but tearing the city apart. Of course, some peoples have came up here and, as you know, got thrown out, called you Humpty Dumpty, falling off the wall. Yeah, that's been said to some of you. But you rate it. You know why? Because you put yourself in this position. I want you to stop doing this in the city. Show some respect for one another, and do like I used to do in the service. If you think you're so bad, put some boxing gloves on, you can go out there and let sign an armed referee, and let them fight it out. So that's a good chance. But I want to tell you something, and listen very carefully, you at home too, looking at 48. And I want you on the council to, it's time you learn, when you open your mouth, what you did in the present, you won't do in the future. That's come November voting. Y'all have a nice night, and cut out the all the bigotry between you.
Good night. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Robert Turner.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, you all know me. I didn't think I was going to have to speak tonight, but after listening to the work session, I feel I need to. Let me start with statements from the city manager and move on to Mr. Cherry. It was said that you had to put 18 million in the retirement fund. That's mainly to finance the bonds that was approved two years ago and is already part of the budget. The reason it costs so much is because the city didn't fund it like they were supposed to for many years. Plus, they borrowed money from it years ago and never paid it back. It would have collapsed had you not done something. Mr. Cherry said you have been good to retirees. I would suggest you look at the papers I gave you at the last meeting, if you think you've been good to the retirees. He also brought up the fact that they spent 20 million to cover the social security offset. That didn't help police and fire one iota. Police and fire are civil service, so they don't get social security unless they worked other jobs. Even then, they must work 30 years at other jobs not to be penalized on their social security, up to 60% of their benefits. Many of our members work when salaries were the lowest in the area. I came to work for this city for $410 a month before taxes and worked 72 hours a week. For those that's not very good at math, that's a dollar and 42 cent an hour for risking your life. If you can spend 3 million for active duty, you can spend 732,000 for retirees. Don't drag this out. Do the right thing. Any questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Cherry?
Just want to correct, Mr. Turner. I didn't say we put 18 million dollars in the retirement. Actually, we put 167 million dollars in the retirement. We spent, you're correct, we spent 20 million dollars for the social security offset. 18 million is our, is our payment this year.
The ARC.
Yes. Okay, that's what I said. Okay, that's not what you said. So that's what I said. We spent 167 million for the retirement fund. We're paying 18 million this year to pay the debt service on it, not, so just want to make sure you're clear on what I said.
Oh, I know exactly what you said. I was sitting there.
All right, thank you, sir. Good night, Mr. Turner.
Our next speaker is Garland Alexander.
I've got some prepared remarks, which I didn't think I needed to make. You might have seen them before, because I brought these same points to you sometime back, and I won't go over them. You can read them for yourself. Couple of things. The manager started out with 732,000 to give us this $500,000, and tonight she talked about 790,000. Talked about the offset, which we don't benefit from. And Mr. Whitaker, and some others said tonight, and it said before, without objection, without objection, this will happen. That's what was said at the last meeting by Mr. Moody, and nobody opened their mouth about the $500. And Ms. Simmons made it in her remarks when she, when she made the motion to approve the line item for the money, for the budget. She said with the understanding that we're going to do this, what Mr. Moody just talked about. And now here we are, the manager's come up with all these reasons why we cannot give the retirees. And I said in my remarks before, and I'll repeat it again, it amounts to about $9.61 a month at the $500. But yet now, we're bringing up about bond ratings, but we pulled out, I mean, last year when we pulled out money out of the reserve fund, and one of the work sessions talked about we'd put all that money back, and it was no problem to take out, I think it's going to be something like 3.2 million for the working people to get $1,000, net $1,000. Now, like I've said before, if we can't afford a half a loaf, surely we can't afford a full loaf. So I'm not throwing stones at the working people, but they make a whole lot more money today than we made when we retired. So if we can't afford to give the retirees something, then maybe we ought to look at reducing the amount we're giving to the working people, and then give us half of what you give them. But to say that the retirees, well, you put 28 years in my case, and I also started at $410 a month and put my life in this city, and now, and they say they care about retirees, I'm sure Mr. Cherry does. In the past, he's done things. He wanted to give a 3% raise last year, and they had to scale it back to two. But to try to take it out of the backs, and I said that to Mr. Cherry, and he got a little ruffled with it, and I understand him doing that. But to say that we now, after it was said twice, without objection, like it was said tonight, without objection, we'll do this. Was said twice at the last meeting, nobody opened their mouth, nobody said a word, and we left here thinking that we were going, that we were going to be treated fair. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And we can check the record, but it was not we were going to do this, we were going to look into it. And I think in the work session, if you were in the room, you heard the way Mr. Cherry articulated that, and I support everything he said. He did not say he was against it. It was at what time that we look at that and the impacts it may have on what we're doing there. And then he compared it with the things that we had done for our retirees. And he spoke several times about, as you just said, he support you as well as our seniors and want to do that at the proper time. So don't, don't mix these things up, and don't, don't get an enemy out of a person that supports you. I think he supports you as well as the rest of us. We just said it's not this time at this moment. And as a matter of fact, he even went further, I think, Mr. Cherry, and said that once we look at the surplus at this fiscal year and when it ends around November and October, if the money is there, then we would probably do that then. So I don't have the record in front of me, but I think what Mr. Moody and what Ms. Simmons recommended was that we look into it and we asked the manager to do that. We did not say we were going to do it, Mr. Alexander. You can respond, sir.
Well, that's not the way most of us understood it. And I don't believe Mr. Moody understood it that way, and I don't believe Ms. Simmons, she's not here.
Okay.
And Mr. Cherry, I want to apologize if I'm making it sound like that you don't support retirees, because I know you do. And, and yeah, it's, we're playing on words that we, it didn't really mean that, you know. But if there's any money left at the end of the year, is what you're saying, if there's any money that we got out there that we haven't spent, then we may do this for the retirees. But we're not doing it for the working people. We're saying for the working people, we're going to give them a $1,000 bonus, not, and it's already been transferred. It's already been transferred, I believe. And that's what I'm asking, that we commit to this and, and do what's right and work with it. I don't believe that if we're going to transfer 3.2 million out for the working people, that 732,000, and she says now 790, it changes, is going to break the bank, so to speak, with the bond ratings. I just don't believe it. I think it's a ploy by the manager. I don't, I don't believe that it's sound. I believe it's going to, she wants to find any way not to do this, is my personal opinion, because of what happened in the last meeting, when it was, when it was clear, I thought, that we're going to do this. Mr. Moody said...
Mr. Alexander, you stated your point. We got it light and clear.
Thank you.
Again, we support our seniors, and we will certainly do what's right at the appropriate time. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Alexander, in our previous meeting, the city manager noted that I believe it'd be something in the tune of around 790...
It's $725,000, which I reported, and I have my notes here.
Right.
If you wanted me to read it again.
That's fine. And I just want to share, as you know, council approved the budget with no tax increase. And previous budgets, we were going to have significant tax increases, and I think that we've done our citizens well with what we've adjusted with these tax rates. And so the amount that would be required is, the mayor stated, Mr. Cherry, I thought he made it clear of the support if there's surplus funds. He also mentioned that there may be some other obligations that we may be tied to that we could not address that at this time. And I would like if our city manager, now that we have the letter from the Virginia Retirement System, and they've completed their research on the payment issue, if you would just share publicly the city's obligation under the Virginia Retirement System, just the city's obligation.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that was brought up as one of the possible payouts we have to take into account.
Mr., the reason I was pausing is I thought you were asking me to respond to him on that.
No, no, I just wanted to bring it.
Okay, right. Oh, I understand now. Dr. Whitaker and members of council, and we've received information as it pertains to the city's responsibility with the, as a member employee, which the city is, and an employer, that we may have to pay something in the realm of $100,032.70 plus cents for the employer's contribution and the member contribution for the city for a former employee.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So you're correct, there are...
Thank you.
So you're correct, there are circumstances that are—that we have to look at as it pertains to money.
Right.
And I think that was the point that Mr. Alexander—
Well, I wouldn't like to comment on that, because—
Well, I was just—it's nothing to comment to it. I was just bringing to your attention that Dr. Patton gave us a figure of how much it would cost, and Mr. Cherry also stated it would come, if we could, from surplus funds. However, there are some other obligations out here that we may be committed to, and that's a major one that has just come to our attention, that we have discussed over several council meetings, but we now have information. I just wanted to share that. That wasn't to comment on, it was just to inform the public of that obligation.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I understand that.
Mr. Alexander. All right, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Alexander, you're absolutely correct. My understanding was that we were gonna do it. That's what I left the meeting thinking, and I think you did, and the others that were in the audience felt the same way. So you're correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Mr. Cherry?
May I respond to that?
Mr. Alexander. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. First, you know, I hate when numbers are thrown around and they're inaccurate. We have about 2,000 or so employees. It probably costs about 2.1 million dollars to give them $1,000, not 3.2 and all that. And I think—you and you, Dr. Whitaker and Mayor, you both characterized what I said in the work session very well. And since I know the public is saying, "What did he say?" You know, I basically reiterated the fact that I do believe we've been very good to retirees, and I've supported them since the day—I got here, with the 167 million dollars to shore up the pension fund, with the $20 million to get the social security offset. We just did another $1,400 this year for the health government. None of those things we had to do, and for those who were benefiting from the social security offset, they are getting—if their retirement check is $1,000 a month, I mean, a social security check, that's what they gained. And we're paying an $18 million bogey each year to make—because it made that happen for retirees. And I further stated that the last time a bonus was given, I was on council, we did it from surplus funds that we realized after our reconciliation around the October-November timeframe, when all the debts were paid for the previous year. And I said at that time, we would take another look at it at that time if there were surplus funds and consider it. But if that's not good enough for you, Mr. Alexander, if it's now never, then it'll be never, because we have some serious obligations coming up. One you just heard about, okay, these things are not tangible. If they were tangible, the ratings agencies wouldn't look at them in the same way. It's not a tangible expense. We just got our ratings reaffirmed. We have been advised, if we go into that money again right now, after we just passed our budget, it's gonna affect our credit rating, which is gonna affect this city for years and years to come, because once it goes down, it's hard to get it back up. We have lived through that, and I'm not gonna put the city through that just for 734,000 dollars that we don't have to spend, that we could possibly do later if money's available. We have supported you. This is a team effort. Sometimes you give and sometimes you take. So this time, we need you to work with us, because we're not gonna jeopardize this entire city and our future financial status to do that right now. And I still say, if money's available after the year and there's a surplus, we'll re-look at it. But the way you guys are approaching this, you're making it very hard for the people who've been supporting you and wanna keep supporting you to do so. And when you and I have had this conversation before, so I'm really taken aback, because I never indicated to you, never, when we talked, that we were gonna do this.
I didn't say you did.
Well, you just said that we did. You insinuated that I did. So, I—this is one thing I used to do. I used to say what I mean, and I used to mean what I say. And I mean what I say on this as well. So, don't insinuate that I said something or agreed to something that I didn't.
Well, I thought what Mr. Whitaker said tonight—
Mr. Whitaker doesn't speak for Paige Cherry. Nor does Mr. Moody, nor does Ms. Simmons. Only person speaks for Paige Cherry is Paige D. Cherry.
Well, what does it mean when you say, "Without objection"? That's what I get lost in. Without objection, we gonna do this, and nobody says anything, does that mean—I know you didn't take a vote. I'm not saying you took a vote.
Mr. Alexander—
And I understand, Mr. Cherry, where you're at, and I don't wanna—I don't wanna harm the city, believe me.
Mr. Alexander, we've got over 400 retirees, and I don't think you or the other gentlemen wanna stand up here and make things mad or bad—
I'm not trying to—
—for 400 people, okay? You've got people that wanna support you, and we're gonna do it at the right time, okay? Good night, Mr. Alexander.
It's actually 13:32. I mean, 1,132 retirees.
Okay. Good night. Thank you, sir. Madam Manager?
Mayor, I just want to make sure, we have 1,109 employees that are active in the city's retirement fund. Thank you. Mayor, we have 1,109 active—
Active, correct.
—retirees in the city's retirement fund. We have 1,132 that are total, but of that number, we still have about 68 who have not retired.
And the—
They're in the plan, but they have not retired.
Right. And the 25 million or 23 million that we went out to correct the social security offset affected about, what, 400 people?
Well, maybe that's—
Okay. And that's where the number is.
Right.
And so what I'm trying to tell you, without publicly letting 97,000 people know that we went and obligated this city for $20 million for 400 people, and we'll be paying that back over the next 20 years, sir. I don't think you wanna stand up here and say you're representing those people when Mr. Cherry and the rest of us have shared with you that now is not the time, but we will do it when it's appropriate. The $18 million ARC that he's referring to, the annual required contribution, is what we have to pay to make that number, okay? I don't think you want to stand up and speak on behalf of 400 and some people that are grateful for what we did and then debt that we incurred behind something that was, as Mr. Cherry said, a moral issue. We did not have to do that. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Elvira Johnson.
My name is Elvira Johnson. I reside at 3313 Armstead Drive, Portsmouth, Virginia. I am a citizen that loves my city. Don't you go—to the people of Portsmouth, don't you get tired of being tired of the bull crap that we hear here, of the high level of disrespect that council gets? I know I do. I said that for a reason. I'm the president of the Wilson Ward Civic League. We have adopted Douglas Park Elementary School, and when I go to the school, I have students that ask me, "Did you see that council meeting last night?" And I say, "You look at it?" They say, "Yes, ma'am." Well, I look at it. "Is that the way they want us to act?" I say, "I sure hope not." I'm supposed to respect my elders, but I was taught, respect is earned. So when I go to Douglas Park Elementary School, this is what I tell my children, 'cause I love every last one of them. When we see people here, 65, 70, 75, 80, or 82, come up here and disrespect the council because of their age, because they feel like they got the right to say that, that's wrong. Yes, not what you teach your children. And just because you don't have a child in school, don't mean that you still can't teach the children. As an adult that have had children in the Portsmouth school system, I'm out here working with these kids, black, white, Hispanic, Jamaican, African, you name it, and I love them all. And the good thing they know is hatred is taught. Love is just instantaneous. It just comes right on you. When I say that, I'm done. Wilson Ward Civic League is proud to announce that we have seven applicants for the Helen Norman Scholarship. Five are from I C Norcom High School, two are for Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Elvira, I just wanna say one thing to you. You know, you're absolutely right, 'cause children do what's natural to—we teach them what's normal. So you're absolutely right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good night, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Mr. Melvin Parker.
Okay.
Mr. Parker's not here.
He's not here.
Okay. Is there any other business or matters that should be come before this council? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.